Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible tragedy. This video will conclude the testimony of former Ocean Gate contractor, Tim Catterson. I have to say, this second and final part of the testimony really surprised me and had me gripped throughout. It includes things I was personally not aware of, such as Mr. Catterson being involved directly in the rescue efforts. His testimony fills in some blanks around the time that the sub went missing and efforts to find it began. He also shares what he believes to have been the cause for the implosion and why he believes that. As someone who saw everything firsthand, Mr. Catterson's account is certainly one to pay close attention to. It is also confirmed by the board, though that section is not included in this video, that the next testimony will be given by no other than David Lockridge. This is a testimony that I, and I'm sure a lot of people, have been waiting for and will be covered on the channel in the coming days. But for now, let's conclude Mr. Catterson's testimony and I promise it's an insightful one and I'll be back again at the end of the video to comment on a few things.
Did the Polar Prince have an ROV onboard? A remotely operated vehicle that could get to the depth for rescues?
Deep Energy was one of the first ships that responded and showed up. Now, Deep Energy is a large behemoth and it carries two ROVs with it. Now, these ROVs are basically designed for, you know, they do work all over the world, but these are work-class ROVs and their usual operating depth for most of the industry ROVs is 3,000 meters. Not enough. When they came onto the scene, Scott, myself, and Angeras transferred over to the Deep Energy. Angeras was the doctor onboard, Scott Griffiths was the Ops Director, and I was me. We went over there. I spent most of my time with the ROV guys in the shed. You know, I was kind of working between them. I got the information for how deep it was. Can you dive? You know, what would it take? And logistically, if they can get down there and find something, you know, what would they need on, you know, what we'd need on the surface to do the recovery sort of thing. So, I was talking with, I don't know his last name, his first name was John. He was the ROV, Chief ROV Operator on the Deep Energy. And he basically said that we have enough strength to reach that, but the ROV is not built for it. That said, it would be criminal for us not to try. So, they did. They sent their ROV down. You know, again, I was with them. We ran it all the way down to the very end of their, of their main cable. And then, this ROV runs off with a TMS. It basically spooled out the other thousand meters that it had on its tether and made it down to the bottom at the site. We were diving at the last fix. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we managed to get to the bottom and just about touched down and the cameras were working and then we lost telemetry. Right immediately after that, cameras went out, everything. Then the vehicle went dead. So, now, they've got all the cables stretched out. They've got a dead vehicle down there at which we have to do, you know, they, I say we, I didn't have anything to do with that. They did, had to do a dead vehicle recovery and then bring up the ROV and where they found out that they had kind of pretty much gutted the ROV. Their, you know, their bottles had collapsed. They essentially destroyed the ROV, you know, trying to help. We continued using the other ROV but not going as deep but to try to use it as, to use the sonar on the ROV to scan and see if we could go, you know. Nobody knew. Nobody knew what the depth was. We couldn't triangulate the depth from what they were getting on the surface. It just, you know, it's just too much missing data. But in the possibility that, under some scenarios, if they dropped all their weights and they had come up into the water column somewhere, you know, we were trying to search, you know, within the water column using the sonar of the ROV because none of these other ships actually had, you know, any bottom scanning capabilities. Of course, none of it worked, but that's how it went until the very end. And at the very end, the Arctic Horizon came in and it, on the back, it had a very specialized ROV from Polagic Research Services. This one can dive to 6,000 meters. And it was something to watch. It was amazing. The ship pulled in literally. It almost was coasting to a stop and they had launched the ROV and it was on its way down, full tilt. If there was any possibility that it was going to be doing, you know, a rescue, they came for hunting bear and they went down, got to the bottom, touched down and within about 10 minutes, found debris.
At approximately 10:47, when the submersible was at 3,341 meters, they had messaged dropping two weights. In your, in your previous and throughout all your years of being a submersible operator, can you please talk to me about dropping weights and what would that mean at that depth?
Okay. Sub was on its way down. Except for a couple of, a few exceptions, almost all of the subs used drop weights to get down. It's just, it's cost-effective, it's efficient, it's simple and easy to work with. You know, it's like a balloon. So, when they drop down, usually before you have the bottom in sight, you will drop, shed some of your weight. So, you, you know, you want to understand how much control you have over the sub because that, from the surface till you starting to try to slow down is a free fall, essentially. You're trying to get the sub down there literally as quick as you can because the longer you stay in the water column, the farther you get washed offshore, washed off target. You know, so your ability to reach the target is quite important. And to do that, you need to go through the water column as quick as you can. Most subs will do about 32 to 35 meters a minute. That's standard. A limiting factor can do 55, but then they're also going to the Marianas Trench too. But for the most part, 30 to 35 meters a minute, that's a very standard number. So, they're falling through the water column. Once they start approaching the bottom, they're going to shed some weight because they've loaded up on the top. They have enough weight to make sure that they can get past, remember I said the 2,000 meter zone. They get past that and now they want to be able to have still enough weight so that they can get to the bottom in a reasonable time. So, generally, they're carrying 200, possibly 300 pounds of ballast. This is to do this, especially when you're going that deep. He said on the log that they're dropping two weights. Each weight weighed 35 pounds. So, they shed 70 pounds. That's not enough weight to stop. It's not enough weight to come back up. That's just, he's just shedding weight to slow down. And I'm sure the intent was to drop these weights, bump your thrusters on the verticals to, can I slow it down to a stop? Yes, perfect. We're good to go. And then, they would continue on to the bottom and considering who was in the cab with Stockton at that particular time, there are two billionaires in there with him. I would absolutely guarantee that he's trying to make sure that this just goes as absolutely perfect and spot-on as he can. So, he's slowing down early at 300, well, 3200 meters, 3300 meters. Yeah, that's a little high still. Normally, I would, you know, if I'm dumping weight, I'm dumping weight at 100 meters. It's okay. I mean, he just, I think he's just, you know, going to try to make everything perfect. It doesn't mean any emergency was in there. It just means that, I mean, the only emergency was probably what was going on in his head is like, "We're not going to touch the bottom with a bump or anything like that. We're going to make this just smooth as and as great as possible." So, yeah, he dumped essentially 70 pounds, which is only slowing you down.
Mr. Catterson, did you have any experience with carbon fiber?
A little bit, yes. A little bit, yes. One of the companies that I've worked for in the past was, it's called ACM, Advanced Ceramic Manufacturing. Don't let the name fool you. They also did both ceramics and composites. So, by no stretch would I say I'm an expert at it, but I'm familiar with carbon fiber and composites.
Were you involved in any conversations regarding testing of the carbon fiber hull, either hull number one or hull number two for Titan?
No.
What was your involvement with the construction or engineering design of the Titan hull, if any?
I had none.
The titanium rings, the segments, which included those dovetail cuts that you previously discussed, I just want to confirm that those domes and titanium rings were reused from the first hull to the second hull?
Yes.
Were you involved in the detachment of the titanium rings from the first hull?
No.
And were you involved in the re-attachment of the titanium rings to the new number two hull?
No.
Did you ever go on a dive on Titan?
No.
Were you ever asked to pilot for Titan?
Not Titan, but the Cyclops.
Would you have felt comfortable going on the Titan to depth?
No.
Can you please explain why?
I don't, I don't believe that composites are the correct material for a pressure vessel that's experiencing external compression. So, I had my doubts. I had my opinions, of course. When I tried to figure out the strength of the hull, I couldn't make it work well enough. Meaning, a composite, a composite shell is strong under traction. Do we agree on that? Yes. Having said that, when you put it under compression, the carbon fiber is not taking the load. It is the matrix that holds it in place. The polyurethane, the acrylic, the epoxy, whatever the material is that holds these fibers into place, that's where your compressive strength comes from. The carbon fibers are strings. So, like I said, by no means am I an expert at this. But when I think about this, I can't bring myself to believing that these strings are staying fixed and absorbing all of the loading correctly as they should be. I think that when you put it under compression, they can buckle, they can shift, they can go side to side. They can move in all directions three dimensionally and the only thing that's holding them in place is the binding material that's holding it all together. So, if you do the calculations on the hull with that in mind, it's just too close to the edge, I feel.
Did you ever voice your concerns to any Ocean Gate employee?
Yes, I did.
Can you name those, those people you voiced your concerns to?
Well, Dave Lockridge, Stockton Rush, Tony Neeson, pretty much anybody that would listen. As I also said, I also don't have any paper history to say that I can back up what I figured out. So, there it is.
You mentioned earlier that the Titan hull would have experienced cyclic fatigue being towed behind the Polar Prince. Can you explain that further?
Cyclical fatigue is the, is the development of cracks, call it. You know, just consider cracks or fissures or potential places of breakage. Sometimes if you see an acrylic window and you'll see all these little tiny cracks and stuff, that's crazing and some of that has come from the cyclic fatigue of being exposed to the heat and cold and sunlight and UV and all manner of things. But it's essentially the degradation of the material to a point where eventually it will fail. In the case of the Titan, I know that questions have been, that brought up about, was it cyclic fatigue that caused this to break? I would agree, but I think it's cyclic fatigue of the glue line, not any of the, not the titanium or anything like that. It's just the scope or the amount of flexure and beating that all of these different parts took. Well, its life was like only three and a half years. That's simply, there's just not enough pounding on it to cause cyclic fatigue within the titanium to come about, nor from the viewport. But cyclic fatigue is also, you know, it's caused by small movements. So, it's fair to ask about what possibly being towed on the LRT or being put on the ship, things like that. And I agree that all of these things would have added to this, but there is absolutely nothing that has the magnitude of what it's being exposed to when it goes doing cycles under pressure. So, they made numerous dives to the Titanic. They filmed it, got pictures, they saw the debris field. Each time they go down there, that's a, that's a pressure cycle. And I think the magnitude of this particular pressure cycle overwhelms everything else. I mean, everything else, yeah, may add something to it, but, but I think that these cycles are the thing that determined the failure.
The dive right before dive 88, that last dive, so it would have been dive 87. In the dive log, it stated that the Lars was partially flooded and it was...
Tipped on. Oh, so when the LRT came up, that's on me. Did it hit anything? No, it was locked in. What happened was, we went through the process of checking everything else. You know, I did my pre-dives. I did them twice because it had, this was not the 18th. This was a different dive, but it still took a long time and I did all the checks. I come in as a contractor, so basically, you know, I know how to do the job, but that doesn't mean that I'm up on everything else that happens around. And in this particular case, what happened was, and I just, I suppose I should have caught it, but I did not. When they opened and closed the hatch, they tap into one of the tanks, because they're using this, an air pad, so because the titanium dome weighs basically, it's almost a ton and a half. It's very heavy. It's got a hinge on the side, which is simply not strong enough to hold the entire weight of this hatch. So, what they had was an air pad that was placed, you know, on a saddle, attached to the dome so that they would put air into this air pad, swing the door open, then let the air out. So, it basically sits in place. And then, when they're going to ready to close it, they put air back into this and close the door. They were using the air from, it would have been the Starboard aft tank because the sub sits on the LRT facing back, backwards. That particular tank, so when they opened, when they used the air to control the, this pad, this also goes through the same place that does the feed to the valves that are to vent the, the vent the tanks as well. So, they went through the process. They closed the hatch. They did all this testing. And when they were done, whoever was doing this particular operation went and closed the valve to disconnect it. But there's another valve right next to it that was supposed to be opened, which fed my control to basically vent the tanks. I had checked all these valves twice, but the third time was, which I didn't check it, it was after they closed the door and shut off the valve and I did not realize that they had shut off the valve. That was the feed valve to vent, you know, the tanks. So, I, we sent the sub down, the platform down and there was some issue with the sub and it had to come back up. It never left the LRT ever. And so, I brought it back up. When I brought it back up, I'm now blowing air into all of these, there's four different tanks on this LRT. I'm blowing air into these tanks and it turns out that the far Starboard aft tank was not filling. And so, the LRT came up and then tipped. It just, it sat there. It was, it was going nowhere, but it was probably uncomfortable for the people inside. But anyways, it came up and it, it was stable, but it certainly wasn't sitting flat. And I could not get any air into that. So, eventually, what we had to do was send a diver down because I was working on the platform at that point. I was not the diver. We sent a diver down. They went down and found that that one valve had been closed. And once they opened it, I was able to fill that back up and bring the platform back up to square, but...
What was the sea state during that?
It was very flat. We were actually, they were actually only, we weren't even at the Titanic site. We were just offshore a little ways in a cove. So, we're, they were just testing something, which obviously didn't work because they had, they never even left this platform. So, it was calm. It was not, you know, it was windy, of course. I mean, this is the open ocean, but it was, there were no huge rollers or anything like that. Still, I should have caught it, but...
Are you familiar with the real-time monitoring system onboard?
Only by name and a description of what it does. It's an acoustic monitoring system. That's, I, how they do it, actually, I don't know. Are they using, you know, like PISO crystals on the hull or are they embedded somewhere? That I don't know. Just that they have something.
The, we talked about class surveys a while ago now. I'm curious though, in addition to these class surveys, have you ever been involved with an inspection from a government agency such as the Coast Guard or maybe the MCA in the North Sea or Transport Canada?
Like, so when I was in New Zealand, we had, everybody with an acronym was standing in line to check us on that one. So, it was their, their Department of Health, their Department of, their Marine Sanctuary. There was just too many to remember, but to be honest with you. But yes, there's, whenever you go to a different place, a different country, everybody has their own set of things that they want to be assured are addressed in, to their questions, I guess, you know. So, I haven't done, in many cases, when I've dove in different countries, I'm usually working for an employer. And so, if that is done, it's probably done by either the Operations Director or such, but...
How much of the ship's crew, how much was the ship's crew involved, either on Polar Prince or Horizon Arctic?
Generally, what they supplied was, you know, methods to get the, our boats often on the ship. They were not out on the platform. They, they basically helped us with grunt work. Basically, you know, on the ship. I mean, if there's something we needed to pack or something. But no, they were not actually part of the actual, the ship's crew is not actually part of the, of the launch.
How about with decision-making as far as if the weather's too bad or something's not safe?
Well, I mean, you know, there's God and then there's the captain. If he basically says that this is bad, he will, he can overrun everything. There's also the Ops Director for the operation itself and they are in contact with the captain to come up with these decisions.
Is that the same at other companies or other subs that you've worked with?
Pretty much everybody I've worked with, yes. It's, there's always, the captain is king.
Is it normal though that the ship's crew is not involved with the submersibles?
The ship's crew is, the times that I've seen ship's crew actually do work with it is when the ship's crew are familiar and operate like, if it's like it's a fixed facility, you know, so it's a sub tender. And it would be ship's crew then that's operating the A-frame or the tuggers or the tow lines or things like that. Yes, they do that type of, they do that type of work. But they will, they never do anything that's actually connected with certifying that the sub is ready to dive or...
You mentioned the dragging of the Titan during the Horizon Arctic operations and you, I believe you said at some point you saw contact with either the Lars or the Titan's hull. And I wanted to clarify which one it was. I think you said you saw some hard contact?
It was the LRT hitting the frame, you know, hitting the frame, but the sub is sitting on the LRT. So, I guess whatever shakes going on through there will translate vaguely to the sub as well.
Understand. Was there, do you remember any instances where there was damage to the hull of the, or even to the...
To the hull?
Or, I'm sorry, to the parts associated with the hull?
Yes, well, there was, there was one point where they, the pad eyes that attach to the Lars. So, for the towing, you got the hauser that goes out and connects to the two points. And while that was being pulled up, I think they had it, where were they? It was just at the point where they had it, you know, being recovered. They, the, it would have been, it would have been the Starboard forward pad eye. That Starboard forward pad eye got ripped off the hull. forward pad eye got ripped off the hull. It, it ripped the weld off. It pulled the, the whole pad eye off. So, I mean, this is sitting on the ship by now. It's kind of, but now, since it got pulled off, it's, it's being pulled sideways. So then we had to re-rig it to pull it all the way into its sitting position. But it, it was not the nicest of, wasn't the best way of recovering, I would, you know.
Yes, sir. Where was that pad eye connected?
Pardon me?
Where was that pad eye connected to?
The pad eye was attached to, there was, basically you had the, the front of the LRT. It's on the outside forward. They had stiffening plates on the aluminum barge tanks. So there were stiffening plates there, and then a large pad eye that's welded on there that the hauser is connected to by a, a large shackle.
You mentioned during your testimony that there was an ops director on the vessel, on the Polar Prince in this case?
Oh, well, that would have been either Scott or Kyle.
Okay. Do you know who maintained communications, text communications with the vessel while it was at?
When I came up, so traditionally, I didn't spend a lot of time on the bridge, you know. I, I went up this, that last time because it was the last dive. It was like, son of a gun, I'm, you know, they're gonna make it down there. So I came up and looked. So on a regular basis, I'm not sure how they do that, but when I went up there that particular time, it was windy, was at the, she was doing the comms, Wendy Rush, and Gary? No, what's his name? I forgot his name, who was doing the tracking, but I, I've met him before. I just, you know, not a lot, but-
And I'd like to touch on a comment you made about the glue line. Like, you, you mentioned that you thought a failure could occur at the glue line?
You have two different materials. You have titanium and you have composite. And to make this one cabin, you gotta somehow attach the composite to the titanium ring. So on that, so there was a dome, and then, for lack of a better word, I, I mean, I don't know what to call them other than retaining rings.
Right.
There's that secondary ring on the front. It was basically completely solid. And on the aft end, that's where they had the penetrators.
Go through.
Because you cannot put holes in the composite. You just cannot. So the glue line is where the end of the composite hull fit into, there was a, it was a milled socket, an annular ring, that was, went into the titanium ring. And so that there was a, basically a, it was about a three-eighths section on the outside and on the inside that sandwiched between, you know, the, the composite in between the two. And so, so the composite then was, it's kind of like so, and it would fit in like that. And then the glue line was on the composite and the titanium.
And one question, I'm curious if the, the lack of a rescue asset was ever discussed? Or did you hear Ocean Gate ever talking about that they did not really lack, or they lacked an asset that could get to depth if there was ever an entanglement or, or something occurred on the bottom?
I wasn't, I wasn't part of actual, you know, the rules of the, of their operation, unfortunately. The only thing I did was, they, they obviously had a list, because when I went up and I asked, you know, I asked Scott if, do you have a call list? And he said, yes, we do. And he showed me. And so they had a list of names and places to call. They did not carry another ROV or anything with them, which, well, to be fair, you know, for, for 50 years, Alvin dove solo without having any backup either. So it's not like they, they were the only ones doing that.
Understand, sir. So when you say a list, it would be list of people with capabilities to have an ROV?
Companies, people, different organizations, whatever. Yes. And that's, that's how they got ahold of Pelagic Research Services. They were on the list.
Could you turn in your binder to Exhibit 024? So would it be a fair thing if I said that the written procedures for the safety of operations ensure the safety of submersible operations?
Every company I've worked with approaches this sort of a different way. For, they all will assess risk. This one has a lot of verbiage and coverage. I would say it's, is their best guess, yes. They're trying to cover all the things to look for to be safe. I, I, I get that. Different companies have different matrices or ways of coming up with how they define their risk. So I would just say that this is just another one that's just a little different.
On page one, or correction, page four, it says, "This document has been prepared by Ocean Gate to provide onshore and offshore personnel with the details required for successful completion of the project." And this is the 2023 Titanic Expedition.
Okay.
So your, your, would be classed as offshore personnel, is that correct?
I would be.
If we go down to, and this was provided in response to a subpoena, and I'd like to go to page five. And on page five, you'll see down at the very bottom, it says Ocean Gate Operations. And you see a list of, in the bottom-
Yeah.
Submersible pilot, lead tech, operations tech. And you don't see names there. You see to be determined. Were all those persons delineated for you so that you understood who was doing each job on this particular expedition?
I would, for each, for each dive, I would know who the pilot was. I wouldn't necessarily know who the passengers were. I don't actually know what some of these terms, what they're trying to actually say, because most of the people that were working on, as a tech on the sub, were pretty much all equal. Now, we all had our tasks. Each one was given the task by, say, either Scott or Kyle, or whoever, to, they need something done. We need more weight. We need something adjusted, or things like that. So I guess that would have been, that would probably be the lead tech as well. But I always just kind of refer to them as the ops directors. Operations techs, they're all person, basically on the same level. It's, they were just, you go and do this, you go and do this, type of thing. We weren't assigned specific things until an issue came up, or they wanted something done.
Did you participate in dive operations risk assessment meetings?
No.
Do you know if any of those meetings were held? In other words, maybe posted on a bulletin board or announced over the vessel's PA system?
I suspect that there were bullets, or bulletins that went out to the people that they were going to have at these meetings. Now, we did every morning have a toolbox talk, which, where Kyle would put up the, his graphs of risk assessments and things like that. So I guess that would be the, what you're probably referring to. I saw those, yes. And they would say, well, that's Kyle being the operations director, that's when he would say, okay, Tim Catterton, you are going to be doing this today, or you're a safety diver, or you're operating the platform, or it was only those, choice between those two, really. So-
And did that individual ask you if you were, for example, like, if you're go for the dive today?
Oh, yes, yes. They would make sure that everybody was, you know, well, capable, not sick, or whatever. I mean, yes, he would ask if, are you, can you do this? Yes, I can.
Did he ask you if the, you know, what you were about to do today for that weather on the given day, if that was, if you were good to go there? Now, as you mentioned fog on particular days where you couldn't work, would they ask your opinion about the safety of the operation that day?
It never even got to that stage. When it was that foggy, it was canceled before it even came down. I mean, this was decided by the captain and the, the ops director. First thing, they get in contact with each other. So that, the whole, the whole operation was basically negated from that decision of those two people.
So for the final dive 88, was there a toolbox meeting or a risk assessment meeting prior to starting dive operations?
It was the evening before, because everybody had to get out there at like four in the morning. And they weren't going to wake up all the other passengers and people. So we had a toolbox talk. If it was a go, by acceptable weather and things like that, all of this, all this remained. And the next day was a great day. I mean, it was calm. It was bright. It was clear. There was no fog whatsoever. So we basically went ahead.
Mr. Catterton, I'm thinking back to your statement where you said you raised safety concerns with certain Ocean Gate employees, including Mr. Rush.
Yeah.
How many times did you raise that concern with Mr. Rush about the integrity of the carbon fiber hull?
How many times? I would say no less than half a dozen. I would say probably more than that. Just-
Did you, did you voice the concern that you felt that the hull would fail catastrophically?
I wasn't positive about what was gonna happen, but I'm just, I just said that I can't make my numbers equal what your numbers are saying. I can't make it, you know, I, I told him, I think that it's not, it's underbuilt. I can't make the numbers work. And basically, well, you know, but he had engineers, not just one, but several of them that were working on this. Clearly, somebody knew what they were doing. And I'm assuming they were gonna know more than I did, because, you know, this was just what I came up with.
What was the general response from Mr. Rush?
His response was basically that. He said, I have several engineers working on this, and they say otherwise. Okay, there it is. I still, you know, we agreed to disagree, but-
Is there anything that you'd like to provide to the board information-wise that we may have missed?
After we found the sub, after the sub was found, I went from doing search and rescue, and then I transferred over to the Arctic Horizon, and then proceeded with recovery. So basically, by the request of the CEO of Pelagic Services, I started, I stayed, well, actually, I jumped ship halfway through and caught the other one back that was going out with the subsalv group, Phoenix, the Navy. We just happened to, phone call came at the right time, and they just happened to be passing. And so I went from the Polar Prince to that ship and went back out on site, and stayed out there on the horizon while we were doing the recovery. I was there mostly to help them to decide, is this, are the, are these dangerous items here, such as the high-pressure tank that was down there? What exactly should they be looking for? So, things like that. So I, I was basically out there to kind of point out, get this, get this, or, you know, can we do this, type of stuff, on what to bring up. And so when we did this, we recovered the forward dome, the two rings. The aft dome, we weren't able to bring up, but at that particular time, because they ran out of time. And we brought up the tailpiece, and some parts of the skids, and, you know, various pieces and bits, which you've probably seen. Out of this, I saw it as it came up and went on the deck. Literally, I got the, you know, I was literally positioning them on the deck at times from, to tie it down. And the things that I saw on that gave me reason to believe that I, I feel I know where the failure was. Seeing how the, how the media had like a field day with misinformation and speculation and downright completely wrong approaches. You know, I felt there was a big discredit going to the public, because the media was, well, there were some bad players out there that were just passing around a lot of wrong information, I felt. And so what I found and what I feel is that the implosion happened instantaneously, that it was not the viewport that failed, because there was no shards, there was no viewport, there's nothing. The viewport was blown out, sat there somewhere still. And that the failure happened at the forward glue line at the ring. This is, you probably already, I mean, I, I know Tom already has a fair idea about, you know, what I think about this, but if it hasn't been said, it is now. That this is how I think the failure happened, is why that, that glue line failed. Cyclical fatigue of the glue. Every time they go and do a dive, the, the hull would collapse in the center. Not a lot, nothing you would actually see with your eye, but it's still enough, that the outside edge would cantilever out. It basically was, when it was squeezed down in the center, it was forced to try to rotate towardly. And I think the water got in through there, worked its way down until the final point, when there was not enough glue line, there was not enough support by that titanium edge on the inside to, to maintain the pressure integrity. And it had to have happened equally, all the way around that ring. Because on the forward ring, on the very inside, that inside tab, go out and look at it, touch it, run your hand across it. It has been sheared off completely, all the way around inward. The only way that would happen is if it all happened at once. If it happened partially at some place, it would have ripped and tore, and then equalized in there. And this other piece, the other remaining piece of that material would stay intact. But that is not the case. It is on the aft end, but not on the forward end. That thing was sheared off smooth. So this had to happen extraordinarily fast, which means the people in there had, they had no idea this was coming. And I just want to make sure that, you know, you let them, you let the public know that nobody, nobody was suffering in there. As a matter of fact, they were probably happy to, they were all waiting to see the Titanic when this happened. So that would be it.
That concludes Mr. Catterton's testimony. And I hope that, like me, you found it very insightful. He made clear about the last known words of communication before the implosion, where the Titan reported to have dropped two weights. I initially assumed this was due to them knowing something was wrong. As when we think of dropping weights, it is, at least I think, easy to connect that with an ascent. So it was good to learn that this would have been done, in fact, to slow down the descent of the vessel, to try and ensure a smooth landing. Still, when asked, Mr. Catterton admits he would not have dove in Titan to full depth, stating he had concerns, which I do find kind of conflicting in this instance.